Give a minute, please.
Let me see, right now I see Commissioner Walde, I see Commissioner Dunklap, I see Commissioner Giorgiani, I see Dr. Caldwell, I see Commissioner Sepeda.
Okay, alright. So, so I'll call this meeting to order?
Ready for the roll call and approval for the special meeting?
Yes, thank you, John.
Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Caldwell? I think you're on mute, Commissioner. Where was he? Oh, maybe he bounced off. Oh, there he is again, he's coming in right now again, okay. Dale, you are? You want me to go on and circle back to him, Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani?
Here.
Commissioner Sepeda?
Here.
Commissioner Dunklap?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright? Commissioner Wright? Alright, we'll circle back to Commissioner Caldwell?
Here.
And Chair?
Here.
Okay, Chair, you have six present. Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic.
Okay, so we'll be moving on to public comment, and at this time, everyone will be placed on mute, and we ask that you show, raise a hand, and John will be calling you out. Each public comment will have a total of five minutes. If at the five minutes you do not use it all and just defer from it, but again, five minutes, and John will let you know when your time is up. John, refer to the first individual, please.
Sure, Chair, also if you're coming in as a phone number, if you could give me your name when you do come in, this way I can make sure it gets part of the record. First is a phone number ending in three nine, I'm sorry, in nine six nine three seven three two two nine nine three nine six nine, uh, set not, let's try this again, seven three two nine nine three nine six nine seven.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's Charlie Cradaville here, and good to be with you, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, you know, have spoken about this a number of times, I've done some deep research into it. I know you've called the special meeting for just this one developer and their, you know, request for special designation to be the redeveloper of the Sears site, and I want to stress how important it is to have onsite affordable housing. The conventional wisdom is that segregation and stratification are bad, and whenever you build especially a large development, that it's good public policy to ensure that people of all income levels can access it. In all my time in New Brunswick, I've never seen a development this large. This is, you know, seven hundred and twenty units plus some additional commercial space, and unfortunately, the developer, as of the latest I've heard, is proposing zero onsite affordable housing. They want to make a token payment of a relatively small amount of money to the Housing Authority so that the Housing Authority can build affordable housing elsewhere in the city, but that would only exacerbate the segregation and stratification that we have in New Brunswick, because that affordable housing will likely go in an area where there's already a lot of people in poverty and poor services for those people. It's critically important that the Housing Authority live up to its mission and ensure that affordable housing is built, and built in the same areas where middle income and, in this case, luxury overpriced house is built. And I really think that there's a lot of questions that the Board should ask. I, you know, may I ask, have there been any changes to the proposal before the Board? Is there any onsite affordable housing now?
Mr. Cradaville, this is a public comment period, there's still going to be a presentation, so, again.
I'm sorry, I was on mute, sorry, Mr. Cradaville, I was on mute, my apologies. So, as John said, at this point, is public comments.
Respectfully, I hope you will open it up to the public after the presentation and allow questions from the public. That's how I was able to elicit some really important facts at your April 29th meeting, like the fact that this developer is proposing to charge more than sixteen hundred dollars a month for a studio apartment. And I also have concerns that they may not deliver on the entire project. I think somebody should ask them if they have a, any projects in their history where they have not fully completed all the phases. This is a project with multiple phases, and, you know, the first phase is very lucrative for them, it's rental housing, but there've been promises and allusions to a supermarket and townhomes, but if those aren't actually built, you know, we'll be left holding the bag. And I do think that the Board should be asking questions and interrogating them about their finances and their timeline for building this, because according to the documents I've reviewed, they are not even expecting to complete the project and start making pilot payments until 2026. So, I think that the Board should have in place agreements to make sure that they deliver on what they promised, that they do it in a timely fashion, and that they're actually equipped to do it, and I haven't heard testimony about that yet, maybe we'll hear it today. But on my end, as a resident, as somebody who cares about the future of this city and being able to afford to live here, not wanting to be priced out of the city I love, I think that you should demand that this developer include onsite affordable housing and make a clear commitment to provide public transportation and reliable public transportation. We've heard allusions to a shuttle, but we don't know how many hours a day it's going to run. We don't know whether they're going to do it just for a few months and then potentially stop. They've not made a clear commitment to provide reliable transportation. I think they should provide free transportation fifteen hours a day, seven days a week, and do it for the duration of the thirty years that they want to keep.
You have a bottom minute, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, thank you, and yeah, so again, on my end, I think this Board would be doing its job and defending New Brunswick, living up to your mission if you require onsite affordable housing and a clear commitment for reliable public transportation. I think there's a lot of people on the call who have a lot to say, and I think that you should listen to them, and please, please do uphold your mission and require that this developer include onsite affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay.
Ready for the next Chair?
Yes, once again, please, on five minutes, we do have a lot of people who would like to give their comments. Please, again, five minutes.
Sure, Perez, Ben Bielen, how do you say the last name Perez, if you can? I'm gonna ask to unview. Perez, are you on?
Yes, I'm on, Patricia Bombelin.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Patricia Bombelin. I am a resident of New Brunswick, I'm an attorney in New Brunswick. I'm also a resident in the neighborhood known as Dewey Heights that abuts the Sears property. I have a number of concerns. I'll begin by saying I second Charlie's sentiments. I think, I think it is important to integrate affordable housing throughout communities within the city and not segregate communities. Indeed, New Jersey is one of only three states in the nation to have an anti-segregation clause in the state constitution. It's rarely observed, it's rarely heated, but building a project that is exclusively essentially luxury housing by the standards of New Brunswick, it's not right, it's not fair, and this is essentially going to be a self-contained village off on Route One. And these folks are only going to be able to exit, not using Route One, on Phelps Avenue, which is essentially a one-lane road most of the time, and the Labor Education Center Road up to Ryder's Lane. And it's an enormous project, it's the biggest project I think that's come along in decades in New Brunswick, and it's going to increase the housing stock by five percent. So, it's quite, quite large. I have requested a copy of the financial agreement between the city and Russo, which Mr. Russo referenced in his testimony at the last meeting. I understood that the, the authority is being called upon to determine the financial ability and experience to carry out this plan. That is one of the questions that was put to the authority at the last meeting, along with the question of whether the application complies with the plan for redevelopment created by the city. As to the first question about the financial ability of the developer, unless the Commissioners have been provided with a copy of the financial app, the financial agreement between the city and the developer, I don't see how they can assess that question. I've asked for a copy of it so I can speak to it intelligently, because I think it is a fundamental question as to ensuring that the project will be complete. There are things about this project that myself and many others do not like. For example, there's no renewable energy component, there's no upgrade to the water and sewer, and the sewer is already a problem without all these additional units on that property. There is no upgrade to the electrical grid that's going to serve this new development as well as the existing communities in which is, I believe it's on Ryder's Lane by the, by the developmental center. It's extremely huge number of people with their cars, with little egress and ingress, and there's Route One in that area is already tricky if you're coming down and you see the two lanes that merge in front of Sears.
Miss Bombelin, you have a bottom minute left.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, but fundamentally, hopefully, a lot of these problems can be addressed. I heard Mr. Russo speak, I don't question their integrity, but at the end of the day, the worst thing that could happen is that this project is only partially done. And one of the questions I have is, is the Housing Authority been named as the developer in the event of default for any of the other projects in recent years? I am concerned, will the project be complete? I think the Authority should be concerned with that, and I think they need to see the financial agreement to honestly assess that question, and I think in the spirit of transparency, that should be available to the public. Mr. Russo referenced it, I'm sure it's been, it's been signed, sealed, and delivered, and there's no reason it should be kept from the public at this juncture.
Thank you, we're gonna go to Oscar Vilar, Oscar?
Yeah, that's fine, so I'm just gonna set one thing straight, so, and this is slightly irrelevant, but I promise I will beat on speaking from the five-minute time that I have. A reporter who wrote an article on the last meeting reported my name as Brian instead of Oscar, so if you're here, whoever that reporter is, or if you're watching, I guess, the recording of this, my name is Oscar, so please get that right. But moving on to what I have to say, I would firstly like to express that I hate being back here. Not that I hate, you know, speaking on behalf of the New Brunswick community, but I hate the fact that Mr. Russo has managed to get another meeting here. The fact that it's called the special meeting feels very, very disingenuous to me, and I also hate, again, just the fact that you've, that everyone here, though the whole Housing Authority has, you know, has willingly opened their arms to this man and his plans to gentrify New Brunswick. And unfortunately, his plan, because it seems like he does have a plan, it's a very persistent, ambitious plan, I will give him that. His plan is, it seems to be working, because the first time around, only one Commissioner, Commissioner Walde voted yes, but the second time around, Commissioner Caldwell and Madam Chair, both of you voted yes for this plan to gentrify New Brunswick, and that's just going to have disastrous effects for, for not just the city, but for the community, for the Rutgers area especially as well, for the students both in the New Brunswick area and for students who are out of state as well. I would also like to touch on Mr. Russo's comments last time around. If, for those of you who recall, he said he was grateful to everyone who had to comment, except for the comment that quote-unquote called him out for his greediness. He doesn't believe he's greedy. Now, of course, that was my comment, you know, I said that out of frustration and disillusionment, but I still stand by those words, you know, it is indeed quite greedy of him to offer to pay the city of New Brunswick about 1.2 million dollars instead of either himself or letting some other independent party, you know, just invest in affordable housing. And the fact of the matter is, the whole point of this is not to, you know, to provide people with housing, but it's just to make money, and that's the essence of greed right there. And if he truly cared about New Brunswick, he would have respected the Housing Authority's decision the first time around and not come back two months later and then a week later after that. Now, I would also like to speak to each individual Commissioner, at least for those who were here last time as well. Commissioner Dunklap, you were the only Commissioner to vote no, well, I do applaud you for that. Next time, going forward, I would like you to please hold your colleagues accountable, because it is clear that they have some sort of investment to this plan, to this housing project as well. And so, I would just urge you to call them out on that going forward. Let's see who else we have here, Commissioner Wright? I don't have much to say, you did abstain last time. You seem to be the youngest member on the committee, and as a young person myself, I would just like to say, why? What's in it for you? I know an abstention is not a yes, but at the same time, just being, assuming that you've been in the New Brunswick community as well, and seeing all of the young people, all of the students, everyone there, how does that not go through your mind when making the decision to abstain? Frankly, I find it quite cowardly. Moving on, Commissioner Caldwell. So, it turns out you are a pastor, which I found quite fascinating, for those of you who don't know. Commissioner Caldwell is also a pastor of the Covenant United Methodist Church in Plainfield, New Jersey. Now, I see you've turned your camera on, anyway, let me proceed what I have to say. As I've mentioned before, Russo developers, they're planning to pay the city quite a significant amount of money instead of, you know, investing in affordable housing, and I assume, of course, that money goes indirectly, since they are taxed here, tax here, dollars, excuse me, they go to...
Oscar, you have a little, about a minute left, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, I will wrap up soon. Again, I would just like to say, it's all very suspect indeed. I will finish up here rather quickly. Madam Chair, I found out that you also, you have a daughter who goes to Rutgers. I believe she is a rising sophomore, and I am self, myself am indeed also a rising sophomore. I would just like to say that if you do vote yes, you will be contributing to the gentrification in New Brunswick, and that gentrification, that contributes to the crime in the area, and sure, Rutgers, College of that area, it's all very isolated from the crime and poverty of New Brunswick. But as students, we joke around that, that we get all these crime alerts all the time from all the crime in the area, but that stuff, as much as we laugh about it, it genuinely scares us. So, again, if you do vote yes, you're, it's going to be scary for me, it's going to be scary for your daughter. So, I urge you and everyone else on the Board to please vote no against this project. Sorry for dragging it out, I wish I could have said more, but again, I appreciate the Board letting me speak and I yield my time.
Okay, thanks, Jesse K., Jesse K.? Are you on, Jesse?
Yeah, it's actually just Jess.
Oh, Jess, okay, I'm sorry, Jess, Jess K., your last name?
It's Cradaville.
Cradaville, okay, Jess, I got you.
Yeah. Hello again, I wanted to thank the Commissioners that voted no last week and register some confusion that just one week later, we're back here again to discuss the same issue. The meeting again is structured in a very unusual manner for public meetings, for the public comment portion to precede any other content that is going to occur in the meeting. I want to say that I've attended a lot of public meetings for different purposes, and this is extremely peculiar, it was commented on last time, and I'm again very confused that this will be the format for this meeting as well, to not give the public an opportunity to hear what the Russo developers have to say about why we're all here again. And I wanted to stress, again, the point that I made last week, that there are people in New Brunswick who can't afford to eat, and that the, the meals served at the Elijah's Promised Soup Kitchen have tripled since 2019, and by bringing luxury housing to the area is going to cause more people to fall into poverty as other rents raise along with the market that is being introduced here. And I think it's really unconscionable to approve a development with not even low-income housing, but not even affordable. I think, I don't think Mr. Russo is necessarily a bad person, but to ignore the pleading of the people on these multiple meetings, it's a little depraved. I think it shows a lack of human feeling. I don't really have a lot else to say, other than I urge you Members of the Board to strike this down again, and please do whatever you can so we don't have to be back here next week or in three days, or whenever Mr. Russo decides that he wants to press forward again with the meeting. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Okay, next is Marcias Nicole, Marc, is it Marcias?
Hello, it's Marcias.
Marcias, I, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, according to the 2020 U.S. Census, the median household income for New Brunswick, New Jersey was forty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, assuming that the renter would have to go by the general rule of thumb that they should be making three times the amount of their rent. And with this building's proposed, starting rent of sixteen hundred dollars, residents would have to be bringing in four thousand eight hundred dollars a month. That would be a yearly salary of fifty-seven thousand, which we have already established our community members do not make. In the last meeting, the developer kept saying that the building would have to be so expensive because of inflation and rising prices. If rising prices is an excuse for such high rent, then why are we making the people of New Brunswick bear, sorry, bear the brunt of the cost? This is a corporation asking for us to allow them to overcharge rent to a community that is already facing a housing crisis with the rising rent costs. If anything, there should be an incentive to build affordable housing on that plot or find ways to support affordable housing within the community. Beyond that, charging sixteen hundred dollars for a studio apartment is practically inhumane, sixteen hundred dollars for no bedrooms. If someone in New Brunswick wanted to overpay for housing, then they could choose from many of our already overpriced apartments in town, such as the Frederick, the Quincy, the Edge, the Aspire, or many other luxury apartments suffocating the city. The proposed development would not allow for any affordable housing units, instead offering a one-time lump sum to the Housing Commission and suggesting that they might put a portion of the money towards other affordable housing incentives. This effectively takes the burden of affordable housing off the shoulders of the development and washes their hands of the social responsibility, thus placing said responsibility in a lump sum that they hope the city will allocate for affordable housing and allowing the development to charge incredible rents and profit off of people who already cannot afford to live in their town. I urge the Council to vote no on this irresponsible use of land as it will be another burden on the people of New Brunswick who seek housing. Thank you for your consideration, I yield my time.
Thank you, Herb, is it Taborus? Herb, Taborus?
Yeah, hi, thank you, yeah, it's Tarboos, it's Tarboos, T-A-R-B-O-U-S, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is the first hearing I've attended. Kind of a red flag went up when I saw that a special meeting was being called shortly there, shortly after the previous meeting. I want to second or endorse many of the things that have been said with respect to clean energy and transportation, gentrification, the pricing out of lower-income folks, lower and even middle-income folks out of the market in New Brunswick, so on and so forth. But to really state what brings me here today, and I come here today as a former candidate for Middlesex County Commissioner and a former candidate for Middlesex County Clerk, and I've been studying the political system here in New Jersey for about the last five years, and since we're all adults in the room here, we have to acknowledge that there's something going on behind the scenes in the smoke-filled rooms that is causing this meeting to even happen. And I imagine, I'm not sure how it works in New Brunswick, I'm a resident of Piscataway, but I believe in Piscataway, the Members of this Board all serve, quote, "at the pleasure of the mayor." I'm not sure that's true here in New Brunswick, but I would urge all of you to stand by your principles and stand by your original decision, because if your decision today, if anyone changes their mind and wishes to approve this project based on any kind of pressure that's been put on you, either politically, personally, or financially, from a political machine that runs Middlesex County and runs New Brunswick, which we can show is quasi-criminal in nature. The political machine in Middlesex County and New Brunswick is quasi-criminal. The only reason it's not criminal is because the state legislature has basically passed laws to make it okay for there to be conflict of interests. It's really a disgusting situation we have here politically in New Jersey, in Middlesex County, and even New Brunswick at a local level. So, I would urge any of you that are here on this, on this committee, on this Board, who are in any way tempted to change your vote, to approve this because of any type of pressure or outside influence into, even threats, I mean, we've seen threats. I've seen them personally, I've seen personal threats made against people who serve on Boards. I've been looking at this for several years now. And I urge any of you, if you're being threatened or forced or coerced in any way to change your vote, to do the right thing and resign. Put your, don't, don't put your own personal political interests or political ambitions in front of the people of New Brunswick, that's not your duty here, that's not your job. Please stick up for the principles, please understand how detrimental this project is for New Brunswick. We saw, we saw all kinds of backroom shenanigans and basically BS going on with the Lincoln Annex being destroyed, basically a school ripped out of the heart of a community, and now you're talking about bringing in all these new units, and what's the educational? How is the Board of Education involved, have they consulted? What's going on with any educational needs in New Brunswick, is that addressed in the plan even? Again, this, the whole thing just stinks to high heaven, and that's why I'm here, and I personally, I'm really tired of it, and if you guys, any of you are sort of hanging your hat on partnering with this corrupt political machine in New Brunswick, I urge you to open your eyes and realize that that machine is going to die a death very soon. So, please do the right thing and vote to stop this project, thank you very much.
Thanks, Herb. Next, we have Elizabeth Seccone, Elizabeth? Are you on? Elizabeth?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Elizabeth.
Thank you, I'm Elizabeth Seccone, I'm a resident of New Brunswick. I'm really concerned with the attitude that this particular developer expects to fill this many luxury apartments, because the luxury apartment stock in New Brunswick is not full now, so it doesn't actually seem sensible to add dozens slash hundreds of more units when we can't fill the luxury units we have. I'm certainly echoing the other people here in that affordable housing is obviously critical in our city, and I also agree with the one comment that simply offering New Brunswick a pile of money to let them get away with this pushes the responsibility onto the city. I don't think that's a reasonable thing. The responsibility is to the developer to achieve affordable housing as well as their development projects. So, I don't even think New Brunswick should make that deal in the first place. One of the main problems I have with this whole episode is that you all as housing commissioners are representing the people of the city of New Brunswick. And the people of the city have attended your meetings and they've spoken about how they don't want this. And up till now, you've heated that, uh, uh, plea twice. But I don't understand why we're even here a third time. You all did the right thing twice. Why do these developers keep getting to come back and put shovel more nonsense? We said no to these people. Why can't they just go away now? Why are we having another meeting about this? How, who did they have to pay to get another meeting? They got a special meeting? They couldn't even go to the regular meeting? What is so important about these particular people and this particular moment that we must push forward so radically immediately? What is going on here that requires such urgency? If this was a regular deal, it would take as long as it takes. Why are we here today at all? The people have spoken. You represented the people speaking. You voted this project down. Why are we doing this again? And I hope we can count on you to vote it down again, and maybe this last time, tell them to stop doing this and wasting all of our time. Uh, so I hope that after the developer gets to make a whole presentation, and I bet their time's not limited to five minutes either. I hope that we all get to speak again on what the actual problems are with their package. Or maybe I can just hope that we won't all have to bother, that these people will just throw in the towel knowing that no one wants what they're offering. So I'd like to cede the rest of my time for the moment and hopefully pick up the rest of my time after I see the shysty plans these people are foisting on us. Uh, is that going to be allowed? Anyone, anyone on the committee board, excuse me?
Sorry, yes.
To be allowed to address the plans that these people are presenting?
Well, um, we will have some opportunity for that, Ms. Con.
Thank you. I'll hold for that then.
Okay, uh, next, uh, is Marge K? Marge K?
Marge Kerber, K E R B E R. I think.
K E R B E R. Thank you, Marge. Bye, Marge.
Okay, I, I would like to just go along with what everybody has said so far. And for me, when I saw this special meeting, it's obvious that there is something going on underneath what we are seeing, okay? In a normal meeting, public meeting, okay, you would have the presentation first, if there have been changes. And then have the public comment. But now we're commenting first and then seeing the presentation. Doesn't make too much sense to me, but then again, we're in New Brunswick. So, but, but, um, as previous people have said, and I have said it again, we have not, at least nine luxury apartments in New Brunswick, okay?
Marge, you're cutting in and out. Marge, you're cutting in and out.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We can hear you now. We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was moving. Um, the Edge, Quincy View, Premier Residences, Aspire, George Brunswick, Renaissance Plaza Square. And I'm sure there are others. And again, as someone previously said, they are not filled. There are vacancies in every single one of them. I checked them all today, and there were vacancies. So what does this developer think? He is going to do to fill all these apartments, especially at the rates that he's charging? But, um, you know, we really need affordable housing. We don't need any more luxury apartments. And he says he can't, he won't be able to make a profit. Excuse me, but he may be able to make half a profit of what he's making. But he can do something, I'm sure, to have some kind of affordable housing in this development. And, and as I said, I don't know why we're here because I don't know what's going on because, you know, we haven't allowed him to make a presentation. But one other thing I want to say with this thirty-year abatement, I'm looking into this stuff, okay? And one of the things I found is an abatement, whether it be five years, ten years, thirty years, should serve the public interest, okay? Should serve the public good, which means that it will encourage mixed income. This does not do that. So why is he even getting an abatement to having another luxury apartment in New Brunswick? I mean, I don't get it. And, and, and I also don't, was there a traffic study done on this? You know, whether any other studies done on this to see what effect it's gonna have? Because I live, I live by the, um, Hook Douglas Campus, you know? So I'm nearby, and I can't imagine what the traffic's gonna be like if this thing goes through. So, and again, and as previous people have said, you know, with the corruption in the city, this just shows that it's still continuing if you guys vote yes. You know, it just goes to show that we don't have, no matter how much we open our mouths, we don't have any say as to what goes on in this city. So I would beg you to please vote no to this guy and, and let him go away, okay? And, and see what else we can do there. Thank you.
Marge, uh, is it Tashawn Myers, Ms. Myers? Tashawn Myers?
Yes.
Oh, so you are. Okay, we can hear you.
Myers and Anthony Eldridge.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you guys for inviting us to, um, this discussion. I think it's very important. Um, our second law of the statements that were made earlier, in particular, Ms. Perez, who spoke about some of the needs for improvements. And, um, we are very, very, very together on this project not moving forward as is. Uh, there are a lot of things that need to be done in order to give the go-ahead for this project, which includes, um, utilities, the electric, water, and sewer line in particular. We reside in Dewey Heights right behind the Sears parking lot, Taylor Avenue. And the sewer line that comes from the Sears old building comes right in front of my house. And that sewer line overflows and stinks up the neighborhood constantly.
Constantly.
Constantly, okay? And it's not even adequate for the existing services, and they're planning to add several more units in that parking lot, which makes no sense. Okay, they need to take that traffic of water and sewer and bring it somewhere else and not through Dewey Heights. Okay, we were told when they came to a presentation to us that the city okayed this, okay? I am asking guys who have to make this vote to correct this, okay? I know that there's been a history of bad decisions in New Brunswick based on inadequate assessment and evaluations of projects over the years, okay? Please do not make this one of them, okay? The members of this community needs support in order to maintain our families here, okay? Please consider what you're doing and go back to the join board, okay? And evaluate what you are doing, okay? Um, we don't have a problem in trying to improve the city. And I know most, if not everyone here, is trying to do that. But passing this project the way it is, is not the way to go. I give my time back to the chair.
Hold on before you continue. So.
Excuse me, sorry. I give my time back to the chair.
Hold on before you continue.
It's not. Let's get, sorry, here, one second.
Hold on before you. What is, who is speaking?
I'm sorry, that was somebody that, that just came on the call. They didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask that, uh, there'll be a vote of no to this project. And that'll be all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank. Again, please do not unmute yourself. Uh, you know, we, we're trying to make sure that people can hear everything. Uh, thank you. Uh, next is Jack. Is it Deja Van, Deja Veen? Deja Veen?
Deja Veen.
Hi, how are you? Go ahead.
Good, good. Well, I want, I support this project. I want to speak on, uh, the benefits and, uh, maybe, uh, uh, some counterstatements of some of the things that have been said. You know, with regard to affordable housing, you know, New Brunswick across the state of New Jersey is one of the most affordable towns, and within our county is the most affordable town. Uh, we're half the price of the surrounding townships. So, uh, I would like to see some better housing come in, and, uh, the idea of putting a million dollars into bolstering the low-cost affordable housing that already exists. I like that. And, uh, whether these are luxury, you know, uh, there's plenty of luxury in New Jersey. These are higher-end, but definitely not luxury. And the, uh, comment about thirty years of free public transportation, I thought, so that's just gonna raise the rents. We have public transportation. It costs. It should cost. It's affordable. And I think we have all of the controls over public transportation to adjust it to accommodate new developments as we have over the last two and a half decades that have been here. And, um, I'm sure the, uh, public transportation will, uh, those routes will change. With regard to the, uh, comments from Herb of Piscataway, yeah, I can understand why he wants the low-cost housing over here and not in his town. So I was a little offended by his approach as an outsider to, hey, you guys have the low cost there because you're already the lowest in the county and some of the lowest in the state. We need to bring it up. Look at our education. Somebody brought up education. We are in the top five percent of spend per student. Lots of new schools in the last two decades. And although we're in the top five percent of the spend, we're in the bottom five percent of the test results. Uh, that's a real problem. Maybe this million dollars can somehow help, and maybe Rutgers can be held to task to start to do their student teaching in New Brunswick. Maybe they could start running graduate-level courses to do workshops in math and English. Maybe bring parents into the high school at night, joint-parent-student study halls, lots of interesting things. Why aren't we bringing Rutgers in support of that? How are we gonna put our failed school system on the backs of a new housing development? No, I say let's get more people back into New Brunswick instead of the flights from New Brunswick because of our, uh, urban decay. And, uh, you know, I say, I say, let's build it up a little bit. The last comment with regard to the odors in Dewey Heights where I live, uh, you know, I have already been to, uh, the sewer that, uh, overflows there. It is a storm sewer, not the sanitation sewer. It's a known problem after the storms and, uh, you know, I've been working with city engineering to help with that. So, uh, to my good neighbors whom I love, I say, I'll show you where it's coming from and I'll show you, uh, an introduction to the folks that are in the face. So, yeah, I like to see it. Oh, one last point, they said, what if it fails? Well, this company, and the first time I heard of them was when they came to our neighborhood to talk. But I've since gone and looked, and they have a pretty successful track record. Their housing developments are, um, uh, withstanding the test of time. So, yeah, I like it. I say let's, let's build better. Let's attract some people back into New Brunswick. Let's, let's do it. That's mine.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Uh, is it David Haran, Haran, David?
It is indeed. Hello, hello.
Hi, David. How are you?
I'm doing all right. Um, I would just like to point out to the point made, just
Oh.
You got muted, David.
I'm sorry.
You're a mute.
David, you're on mute.
Apologies.
Oh, go ahead. There you are. Yes, we got your back. Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, uh, the tax exemption for this development is the most curious thing to me. Uh, quite literally in the document for the, uh, approval, there's this line, it says for, in regards to calculating the pilot cost, six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, right? Right next to that, it says assumes all units at one hundred percent occupancy. Now, this was fascinating. Uh, there are open availabilities at all of the other Russo properties. So the fact that they promised you a hundred percent occupancy is kind of funny, but there's another level to it. Uh, whether it be, uh, Union, whether it is Union Township, where there is a, um, Russo development, median income ninety-five thousand dollars. Woodbridge, another Russo development, median income ninety-three thousand dollars. Uh, Lynn Hurst, ninety thousand dollars. Kiernan, where Vermela East and West was located, is the cheapest. It's seventy-three thousand dollars. What does all of this mean? Everywhere else where there is a Russo slash Vermela development, the higher rents are affordable. The areas have more money. New Brunswick's median income, as pointed out before, is forty-three thousand dollars. It is fascinating to me that despite building in wealthier areas where their rents are more affordable, they still cannot achieve one hundred percent occupancy. And it is fascinating then that they promised you this pilot income, this, um, pilot payment, payment in lieu of taxes based on a hundred percent occupancy when they've never once achieved it. Uh, my friends, the money they have offered to give you, you simply will not see. Uh, for that reason alone, the fact that they've calculated this based off more occupancy than they have ever achieved, this development should be opposed. That's all I've got. I've seen my time.
Okay, uh, thanks, David. Rusty, is it Flores, Flores, Rusty?
Yes, it's me, Rusty Flores.
How are you?
Good, good. So, um, first, thank you for your time, and I want to thank everyone who voted no the last time. Again, I want to express everyone's frustration with, we literally just had a meeting and we're here again, um, to vote on the same thing. And the first time we all expressed and we said what was needed to be said, we said no. And here we are again, expressing that we don't want this development. Um, there's a lot of things in New Brunswick that should be looked at before all of this. Um, again, there is a lot of issue with low-income housing. As someone who has now lived in the city for thirty years, I, I understand the changes that have come to the city and specifically changes that have only come to certain parts of the city. The downtown area versus French Street versus other areas look completely different. The development, the way things are being built, what is being taken care of, how things are being taken care of, completely different. Um, so the fact that we're now focusing on one, another area where it's also away from the main community where a lot of Latino and Black citizens live is something very telling to me, right? We have areas, there's trash that has not been picked up. Trash cans have been removed from a lot of parts of the city. So trash is now everywhere. There's things that need to be taken care of. We, we're seeing an increase in homelessness in the city. And again, we're focusing on building, you don't want to call them luxury apartments? Fine, let's not call them luxury apartments. But we're building apartments that are not affordable to people who live in the city. And I think that's the point we're not focusing on, right? Where is the affordability? We've seen other towns, Newark, Camden, all these other areas able to include affordable housing into projects that are being built currently in their cities. We see developments that are happening to help better the school system, to help better the community as a whole. Why aren't we doing these things? And if we need people as an example, let's look at those cities, let's see what they're doing, and let's move forward with it. I think there are bigger things, and again, the frustration of us having to come again and again to express the same thing for this project, it is really starting to not only get annoying, but it's also telling of where priorities are in this city currently. So I just wanted to say that, um, please vote no again. A thank you to all of those who did vote no the last time, and with that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Albert Filari? Albert, are you on? Albert?
Hello? Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you now, Albert. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yeah, my name is Albert Valeri. I live in the second ward here, uh, not too far from the Douglas Campus. In fact, about two and a half blocks or so. And, uh, and I see, uh, for one thing, we're gonna have a lot more traffic. That, that's a given. I would estimate a good twelve hundred more cars. And when there's an event at Rutgers, we see all the detours coming to our little quiet neighborhood here. And I can see that happening much more often because they're gonna be trying to avoid the main streets because they're gonna be really, you know, especially, uh, George Street and maybe some of the college streets. So we're gonna get a, a, a clobbering right there. And I, 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 another thing is th- this tax, I mean, this tax abatement, I mean, you know, they have to give something to get something. I mean, even New York City now, before they get any kind of tax break, they have to promise low-income apartments, low middle-income apartments. Why can't we have those, uh, stipulations as well? But even with those stipulations, I think it's a bad idea for this thing to be developed here. And think of how it's going to affect the infrastructure. How much more is that gonna add on our infrastructure? Uh, of the, uh, you know, water, sewers, electricity, you know, whatever else, the, uh, you know, services, uh, pickups, garbage pickups, name it, whatever else is gonna be involved. We see that, uh, we, we can give this money away, but we can't take care of certain simple things like we need, you know, we can't get rid of electronic waste. There's There's nowhere, I see TVs thrown out all over the place. They put them out thinking they're gonna get picked up and they never get picked up. I have an analog, a sixty-pound analog that I don't know what to do with. I've had it for years. And I just had to put it somewhere in this corner. And this is, this is uh, you know, basic things, and we can give away these tax abatements. And I know you're under enormous pressure to do this. I mean, I believe uh Mr. DeLavon was part of that pressure. I mean, these people are going to be hammering away at you. So you've got to understand, this is, this is something that you have to do because it's the right thing to do is to vote that down. Not because it will maybe advance some position that you're aspiring to. You know, and this is, this game is played a lot. I mean, the developer wants something, they keep coming back. You know, and they hope that maybe people get bored or disgusted or give up. But the thing is, we're not gonna do that. Because we know how important this is. I mean, to some people, this is almost like an existential struggle. Because you're gonna see people turn out on the streets. Crime is gonna increase. We see that happening, it's been happening for the last twenty years with all this, y- all all these radibles being knocked down.
Albert, you have one minute, Albert. You have one minute. I don't wanna interrupt. I'm sorry, go ahead. You have one minute.
Okay, and uh there's, there's going to be a lot of, you know, a lo- a lot of fallout because of wh- what what happens here, because people are going to complain. They're gonna, they're not gonna like what's happening in their communities right around the Douglas area. There's enough traffic because of Doug- Douglas College. And I'm, I live right near here. And we're not gonna see this, this project as something to benefit us. Because it's not gonna benefit New Brunswick. It's gonna benefit people who have in- uh large investments and they're gonna make, they're gonna make money on this. And I believe that the Euro, the mayor is one of them. He's going to be uh he's going to be pushing hard on this. And we know because every time he's at one of these ribbon cuttings, he's there with a smile. That's the only time we ever see him if we go to these things. Because he never goes to anywhere else. He's missing in action. He's never in any council meetings. So he's pushing you right now from behind the scenes, him and his other goons is what I would call them.
Albert, you're on your time. So if you could finish up, Albert.
Okay, I urge you without your heart, please do the right thing, vote this thing down. Because I don't see any anything, any advantage to this for the New Brunswick community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh A- Amber, there's no last name, Amber?
Hi, my name is Amber, Amber Saravia. I'm a resident of New Brunswick. I I completely think it's ridiculous that we're having a third hearing about this project. Um it's already been denied twice. And so the fact that we're doing another private secretive hearing is ridiculous. And I'm happy to see, you know, the community here, you know, speaking up against it because that's what we deserve. We deserve to hear our voice. Um this is gonna directly impact, you know, the community members here in the city. Uh we wanna make sure that, you know, projects proposed are uplifting the community. Uh this project completely goes against that, goes completely against the mission of the housing authority. Uh it's just gonna be inviting outsiders within the city and putting, pushing down the community members that need it most. Um as mentioned, I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of New Brunswick residents who barely can afford right now, afford rent right now. And so by, you know, having housing that, you know, starting off studio apartment sixteen hundred dollars is completely uncalled for and not um realistic to the demographic of New Brunswick. And so we need to make sure that we're providing options for the city and the community um that makes sense for them and uplifts them to be able to live and and have a a good life here uh within New Brunswick. Um I really do hope I have the time to ask questions after the presentation ends. I think it's only right that the community members here have that opportunity to ask the important questions about this project. If there's, you know, no s- stand standing um new information in regards to the project, I really hope that the the board members, you know, vote no on this proposal. Uh we need to make sure that, you know, Russo is thinking about the community and is being specific about what this project and this proposal would bring to the city. Um big issues being public transportation and affordable housing. And so uh I yield my time, but I really do hope I I can talk later and ask questions after the presentation. I think that is our right as community members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amber. Uh n- next is, is it McRockford? At Gmail, there's no name, McRockford?
It's uh Michael Croftford. I've been to several.
Hi, Michael, Michael Croftford, you said?
Yes.
Okay, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, um uh I I'm, I was uh heartened uh to see some opposition to this plan. Um I've been following the meetings but uh not participating. Uh largely out of a kind of uh uh feeling of depression that um the right decision will once again not be made. Um uh I've been here before. Um I was one of the people most adversely affected by the um other housing development project at one hundred and one twenty and two hundred Jersey Avenue, all that stuff. Um where there are several hundred so-called luxury or whatever you wanna call it, basically unaffordable apartments that are or units, hu- housing units that are going to be built. Um all of which will, as far as I understand it now, will be unaffordable to me at my forty to fifty thousand dollar, former four fifty thousand dollar uh income level. Um I am actually right in the heart of the median income that you guys are talking about. Um and I, 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 my business has already been displaced. And uh I don't know all the details of this project that I I would like to. Um I, you know, I check out a little bit, you know, but I can say that uh uh it's maybe too much private information, but um uh the result of my displacement as a business owner uh uh conducting a business in New Brunswick, I've been displaced. Um that's the polite word for basically uh vaporized. I am technically uh no longer uh living in my own home. Uh I am living at the grace of a friend who has been helping me. Um I say this not for sympathy, but for uh a cipher for what other people who will be displaced, not specifically by this development, because it's a big parking lot. But uh by the ripple effects of displacement that occurs with uh housing projects that basically are unaffordable to locals. Because it's, it's pretty well documented that um the rising tide of rent increases lifts um all rents uh into a greater unaffordability. And so, um I, I, I don't have enough specific stuff to say. I do see that uh there are many, many dark windows in the housing that has already been built that fits the same sort of uh demographic goal. Um it's not the demographic that exists already in New Brunswick, so it's clearly aimed at an outside population that doesn't already live here. Um I do wanna say that um that it's interesting that in the thirty-five years that I've had some or full-time uh life in New Brunswick, that French Street has come back all in its own, essentially all in its own with uh just the trickling, if anything, of help from the major developers in New Brunswick. And it's by far the most vibrant, exciting neighborhood. You know, it's, it's not my neighborhood per se, but it's vibrant and exciting. And 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 that was done with almost no help from developers and everything like that. And I worry now because what's going to happen probably is another s- the 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 place that actually exists between the hospital zone downtown and the new zone that is being developed is gonna squeeze out that very vital um and energetic and reasonably affordable right now area of New Brunswick. And and so, I, I, my, my, my beef, of course, is with developers, yes. Like, but I've said this before, developers, their job is to develop. Their job is to make whatever deal they can. And so the laws have been written favorable to them. My beef is with the boards that exist in New Brunswick. Those are the people who are accountable to people here. Not just developers, they're a constituency, yes. But what about the rest of us? Including people who don't look like me, don't speak the same languages as I do, you know? I, I, I'm, you know, I I feel, I feel, it's embarrassing on some level, not embarrassing. I don't know what the word is. Depressing. To have it, to have heard from the time I was in my twenties till now I'm in my fifties, these essential same arguments. And things have not really improved for the center wards of the city. Thirty-five years that I've been here, you know, I yield my time.
Thank you, Michael. Uh this is gonna be interesting. L I E F and then they, them?
Uh yeah, those are my pronouns. My name is Leaf.
Leaf, okay, Leaf, thank you.
No problem. Um, yeah. Yeah, so I I have been a resident of New Brunswick, but I actually, I'm like in the past uh three, four years. Um but I actually live down east in a little bit in Somerset, right outside of New Brunswick now because of the lack of affordable housing. It's been very difficult to find anywhere to afford. And um as again has been cited by others on the call and is frequently requested of landlords, three times the rent is often asked for. And when rent keeps going up year after year across the board, wages are not. So this is clearly unmistakably gentrification. This is not for the benefit of the community. Uh working-class families and individuals were being pushed out. We can't afford any of this. This isn't for the good of New Brunswick in any way that's feasible for the actual community. Um and speaking of Rutgers, since Rutgers was mentioned earlier on the call, I am a Rutgers graduate. Um I'm like, uh some of my time at New, like in New Brunswick was as a student. And um both working-class and families, uh working-class families and students are constantly taken advantage of by the landlords due to the lack of affordable housing. When things are easier to afford, like when things, when they don't require three times the rent, it's oftentimes because there are huge violations in livable conditions. I have um experienced a lack of adequate heating during the winter, leaks everywhere, huge issues in plumbing. Like you can talk to any Rutgers student who has lived off-campus and they know about the rampant plumbing issues with most of these pretty old houses. Um and extensive mold. If more housing is to be offered to the New Brunswick community, it has to be affordable. It cannot be just another way to push them out. So if this goes through, like other, um again, not luxury, but higher-end or not affordable housing goes through, you will have more people on the streets. You will not have anyone in proximity to even take these low-wage positions that are being offered in the city. Like essential staff, like custodial staff, people who make your food, the whole nobody wants to work thing. It's because people are constantly being pushed out and not able to uh just take on the transportation fees that are required for them to keep their job if they were to be in proximity. Um and additionally, it's also because there's too many people who are sick to work now, who have caught COVID and can't work because they are not here anymore. And this community is vital to making all of these things happen to Rutgers, to the greater New Brunswick community, to the New Brunswick High School education. All of this infrastructure relies on working-class people, on families who are not being paid these wages and people who cannot afford these things. So the rent is just gonna continue to go up and people will be pushed out. And that is, again, clearly gentrification and absolutely unacceptable. And the fact that there have been several meetings about this already really speaks to the priorities that the New Brunswick Board has when it comes to the community. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Leaf. Uh Jascomar?
Yes, this is Jascomar. Can you hear me?
Uh Jascomar, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Awesome. Uh I would like to thank the board for giving me this opportunity to speak. So in my last time speaking here, I made the case that this gentrifying property development could lead to an increase in crime. After the public comments, the attorney Kate Coffey pointed out that the question before the redevelopment authorities, whether Russo and his development company can feasibly afford to build this development. I would like to raise an objection in that regard. I'm aware that the tax exemption has already been approved, but I would like to question whether a developer that stands to make so much profit would need such a lengthy tax exemption. And the statute in regard to the New Jersey pilot program, the point of a tax exemption or a tax abatement is to bring in economic activity that wouldn't otherwise be in New Brunswick and that would benefit the city. However, and as many of the people who have made comments before me have pointed out, there's a laundry list of negatives. So, I would like to consider whether the residents of these luxury apartments will also incur a negative. They'll be using public services and using New Brunswick infrastructure as well as bringing in more high-scale competition into the workforce that can bring downward pressure on wages and salaries in the area. So, my question is for Kate Coffey or Russo himself. Has there been a thorough cost-benefit analysis of this development? What opportunity cost does the city incur by taking on this development that has received such a lengthy tax exemption? And also, what costs the city will this development incur in terms of infrastructure, uh water, trash collection, all that? And also, what are the projected economic benefits, not just in terms of the taxes or whatever um whatever payment Russo is planning to make? I see my time.
Okay, thanks, Jascomar. Uh Lilia Fernandez?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Lilia.
I've had um unstable internet connection, so I apologize. Um but I am probably gonna echo what a number of people have already said. I'm a resident of New Brunswick, of Dewey Heights in particular, a taxpayer and a very concerned citizen who's gotten involved in uh um several matters in um New Brunswick involving development. Now, I'm rather irritated and upset that I have to be at yet another meeting when I've already attended two city council meetings to um to articulate my uh objections to this project as a resident who will be directly impacted in the neighborhood directly behind this year's development. And as have many of my neighbors who live on the block directly behind it. I've noticed that a number of trees have already been marked along the berm. Um it looks like they're planning to be torn down, taken down. That is gonna allow more noise to come through. And um with the addition of seven hundred and fifty units in that development, what could the city officials possibly be thinking is going to happen? Seven hundred and fifty units. Imagine that the studios have one occupant and that some might have three occupants. So let's say an average, conservatively, an average of two occupants per unit. That's fifteen hundred additional residents that you're adding to this very confined uh finite space right behind Dewey Heights. Okay, that's just the quality of life um uh issue that I think is um is is completely being ignored because this development project, like so many others in New Brunswick and around the country, are completely reckless, thoughtless, go forward and without any kind of consideration of the the environmental impact they're gonna have, the economic impact they're going to have. All they do is line the pockets of the developers and the city officials and leaders who, you know, grease the wheels to make this happen. I'm sorry to say. Um clearly, uh this is gonna increase the the number of homeless in the city as uh because uh resources are being directed towards uh unaffordable housing instead of being directed towards making New Brunswick a more affordable and livable place for working people. Um and if in reality, what city leaders want to do is push out the poor, push out the homeless, push out the immigrants, the Mexicans, the working people in the town who do so much of the labor and have contributed so much to the economic activity of uh the city, then I would like to hear you explicitly state that. Why don't you come forward and it's directly say, we wanna replace the population of New Brunswick with a different class of people? Because that's what I see happening here. Um and it's what's happened all over the, all over the country, as I said, and many other places that have had this kind of uh just completely senseless development. Um finally, I wanna say that uh tax abatement inducements, as someone mentioned earlier, are meant to attract development to cities that are not desirable or that uh areas where developers would not be willing to invest. Is New Brunswick really that pitiful and pathetic a place to live that you have to be handing out tax abatements and pilots like lollipops to all of these developers all over the place? For all the high-rises that someone mentioned earlier, for this new project and for others. I think it's absolutely disgraceful. As I said in the city council meeting, I'm embarrassed to be a resident of New Brunswick and to see that our city officials, elected officials, are uh voting i- in in support of these things. And I see no reason why we are here yet again when the housing voting in 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 support of these things. And I see no reason why we are here yet again when the housing authority has already voted twice against this. Um, and that's all I'll say.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, next is M Moto G Stylist? Moto G? Moto? Moto, I can see your mouth. You're not, you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, 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 there you are. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm outside, I'm outside, but.
Well, you have a real bad echo. Okay, there we go. Go ahead.
Well, maybe I should just speak to the speaker phone?
Yeah, you're you're echoing back and forth, maybe uh, just uh, well, go ahead. I mean, we we got you. We can hear you. It's just gonna be a slight echo. Moto?
Can I switch over to my phone line? I'm on two lines.
Yeah, we're fine with the echo. You can just speak with the echo. That's fine. We can hear you.
Well, sorry, I like I said, I, I don't like talking like this.
If you wanna call back on a landline and just, just put your name on, we can, you can add you in.
I'm on the landline as well. I have two cell phones. That's seven three two.
Turn off one of your phones.
You have to turn off one of the lines because it's echoing back into your phone. You can't have the audio and the video on.
Just mute one of them.
Yeah, just mute one of them. If you mute one of them, you'll be able to speak without the echo.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go on, please. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much for the advice telling me what the situation was. Thank you very much. I would just like to start off by saying basically due to where I'm sad, I'm angry that we're back here again, but I will tell you why we're back here again, because this is about money. Due to where the housing authority voted no, then this went to the city council meeting and the city council members all voted yes. Waiting for your next meeting where you said no again, due to where I don't see the purpose of this other than wow. Got me feeling somebody's getting paid money to really change your vote. After the city council said, oh, yes, yes, we're gonna all vote yes against with you voting no. And please, it's recorded with the city council meeting due to where, wow, why would they vote yes after you voted no? And like I said, while hopefully you continue to do your vote no, due to where I say as a resident of forty-five years of New Brunswick and a person, a photographer and activist, why get out and see what goes on in New Brunswick? Come on, we need affordable housing. You have over five hundred people homeless in New Brunswick. I have never seen it like this ever before. Due to where what? Please, maybe you take a walk one day, go by Joyce Comer Park by the railroad tracks. You have forty, fifty people living over there. How about you take a walk over here to Fifty Jersey Avenue where you're building the new school? You have about a hundred and fifty living behind that building. Go to Boyd Park. How many homeless down there at Boyd Park? Due to where, come, come, come on, French Street here, Walgreens. Come on, please, we need something affordable to help our city, not keep putting our city down. And I'm speaking from my heart as a resident due to where I see things that go on. And as a person due to where who just recently got an apartment, wow, I can afford the sixteen forty-five, but wow. Just to get in that apartment, I would have to make seventy-two thousand dollars? Outrageous, which a lot of people don't do and I don't either, due to where that would just, I had to do it with a family member. But sad to say, come on, we don't need any more uh, luxury buildings due to where I would say New Brunswick is overpopulated already. The city can't keep the correct count saying, oh, we only have about fifty to fifty-five thousand residents. But wow, I know that's not true after seeing record breaking. Six hundred and twenty kids graduating, graduating from twelfth grade with New Brunswick High School. Come on, our schools are overpopulated. You can take that amount of kids from what, maybe five different townships? Six hundred and twenty kids to graduate only from twelfth grade? Come on, New Brunswick is overpopulated and it needs severe help. And please, like I said, I hope from my heart that all of you, this is not about money because money's not gonna be able to help you in every way. Because like I said, rich or poor, everyone will need a helping hand someday in some type of way. And like I said, you voted no last time and please, I pray that you do vote no again because like I said, it's not right. Due to where someone mentioned about the motor, the vehicles, okay, seven hundred units, say you have two people, that's twelve hundred vehicles. What, we don't need any more vehicles basically coming through New Brunswick due to where what, you have a motor vehicle crash or two every day in New Brunswick now? A lot going on and honestly, I'm not happy with 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 any of it. And like I said, due to where I really believe as a person with special vision, due to where this is a scam for the city to vote over you saying yes and then send the vote back to you again? Something suspicious about that, about money, money, money. And please, like I said, think about it. Like I said, come on, New Brunswick needs help. I have never seen it like this before. When I used to say never and I admit, come on, too many homeless out here, people who need help. But why does this have to be luxury, luxury? Honestly, I remember what the first thing Mayor Cahill said, ooh, we're knocking down Memorial Parkway, the projects, oh, we don't want any high-rise buildings. Due to where what? There's a fire hazard, fire hazard. Now you see, all you see high-rise luxury buildings going around. Please, let's do the right thing. Go with God and do the right thing that where you know to help New Brunswick get better. Everything's not about money. Like I said, money cannot save you in every way. Please, New Brunswick really needs help. And like I said, I hope you take it from a lot of people speaking to you from your heart that's been here in New Brunswick. And like I said, especially me, due to where I see what goes on in New Brunswick every day. Please, I hope you really understand. Think about affordable housing due to where what? We lied to that where the school is at Fifty Jersey Avenue. That was supposed to be affordable housing. What, said couldn't do it due to where the land was contaminated, but it's okay to build a school on there? When is the next place gonna be for affordable housing where people cannot afford to really stay in New Brunswick? While our city employees that said, wow, I work seven days a week from you, but wow, I can't even afford to live in New Brunswick. So please, like I said, sixteen hundred dollars for a studio? Like I said, New Brunswick is already overpopulated, but if anything, we need affordable housing, please. I can't say it enough, but so many times, go with your, go with the right thing, God. Money is not everything.
Thanks Moto. You've coming up on your time limit, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Norman Markowitz, Norman?
Yeah, uh, I didn't plan to speak because I don't live in New Brunswick, but I've taught at Rutgers University since nineteen seventy-one. When I first came to New Brunswick, uh, there were many, many problems. Uh, but there was no mass homelessness. And the level of inequality within a city where Rutgers University and Johnson and Johnson were the major powers uh, was nothing like what it has become with the gentrification that began a long, long time ago. Uh, over the decades. Uh, this is a political question. First and foremost, I wanna speak to the people who are on this phone uh, meeting. Not necessarily the board. Uh, because everybody who has spoken, say one, is strongly opposed to this policy. Uh, and you should be. You should be. Uh, New Brunswick is not a right-wing Republican city in which the people vote for right-wing Republican candidates. This program, this plan is a classic Republican, right-wing uh, pro-business, pro-corporation, pro, let's forget about the people and accumulate wealth policy. That is exactly what it is. And uh, it is outrageous that it's being put forward in this way over and over again. By the way, uh, about forty years ago, a philosopher named Herbert Marcuse developed the concept of repressive tolerance. This makes a travesty of democracy. What is repressive tolerance? We can say what we want as much as we want and the people in power will do what they want. Regardless of what we say. And they'll say because they got us weak, this is about democracy. Well, of course, that's not about democracy on any level, on any level. This is a political issue. And frankly, uh, I would say to the people who live in New Brunswick uh, that you must get together. Not simply go to meetings of city councils and uh, boards and work together to elect people who will represent your interests. People like my former student of many years ago, Charlie Cattolfo, who is running for mayor and others. I don't live in New Brunswick, but I've seen it and I participated in it uh, literally for half a century. And uh, the solutions have to be made in terms of the better past. Good public housing. A concept that became invisible over forty years ago, rent control. Uh, planning in the public interest. And on that, I will leave uh, leave uh, yield the floor. I hope I haven't spoken too long and thank you.
Oh, you're, you're fine, sir. Uh, okay, next is Damaris Morales, Damaris?
Yes, how you doing? It's Damaris.
Hi, Damaris. I'm sorry, Damaris, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm, I, I live in New Brunswick. I've been living here since I got out the service. So I've been here for some time since two thousand and three and um, New Jersey is, is a wonderful place and I, I really love living in New Brunswick. I think the biggest issue is um, the lack of affordable housing, but we have very, very uh, insane crime issues. We have flooding issues. Wh- what is the city of New Brunswick going to do to rectify the flooding? Um, because I, I don't rent, my, my daughter does rent in New Brunswick. I am a homeowner, but I do worry about my daughter. Um, because her place does flood. She's been living in her own apartment for some time. And um, she, she does need affordable housing. My thing is um, these high rises should have at least a lot of where people can apply to receive some type of affordable place to, to live because um, it, it isn't fair. People should not be pushed out of their community. But we, we have to do something to rectify the, the crimes, the flooding. Um, because it's constant, it's not changing. And um, we have to deal with mold issues. We have to deal with uh, you know, mice coming into the homes. Um, it, it's not getting better. What, what are these people building the high rises? What are they gonna do for the community to, to change some of these things? Because um, where's all the water gonna go? You know, they're gonna build all these high rises, but for everyone else around them, wh- where is the water gonna drain to? Are they looking at into this infrastructure as far as the, the drainage issue? Um, so there's a lot of things that, that should be looked at before um, just running ahead and building new high rises without without fixing the issues we currently have because we always flood. New Brunswick always floods. It, it's gotten so bad to the point where it's scary. When it rains, it's really scary. What are we going to do about that? And I yield my time.
Okay, thanks. Lee, Lee, I think I saw your hand up. Was your hand up, Lee?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Lee. Okay, I can see that.
Thank you so much. So my name is Lee Darden. I am from Woodbridge, so I do not live in New Brunswick. But I came today because I heard about the issue that's going on and I came to listen in and just from the comments that I'm hearing from this meeting, it just very much seems like a battle between the haves versus the have-nots. Um, overwhelmingly, it seems that there isn't affordable housing based on what I'm hearing in these meetings. I mean, there was only that one person who is for this. And you know, it seemed to me that he was referring to people that can't afford the rent to be like urban decay, which is, was quite shocking to hear. Um, someone referred to poor people that way. Um, so you know, I just hope that the board does the right thing and listens to the overwhelming amount of people that are telling you that it's not affordable to live, affordable to live in New Brunswick. I mean, I did a quick Google search when that guy said that New Brunswick is one of the most affordable places to live. But I don't find that the quick Google uh, search supported that. Um, it looked like it was just as expensive as everywhere else in Middlesex County that um, the prices are rising for rent. So you know, just based on what I'm hearing today, I really do hope that the board sides with the have-nots and works with them to help build New Brunswick up with the people that are there as opposed to pushing out the people that can't afford it and bringing in, you know, quote unquote, more desirable people, um, which I don't agree with that sentiment. And um, that's all I had to say and I yield my time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lee. Uh, Tom Cosma? Tom, are you with us?
Uh, hi, yeah.
Hi, Tom. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tom. Uh, I'm a Rutgers student uh, living uh, in the New Brunswick area, technically South River. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to offer comment. This is uh, the first of the meetings related to this development that I've been able to attend, so I apologize if I get any details wrong. I was also expecting that there would have been a presentation with any updates from the developer prior to the public comment. So again, I hope I don't come across as uninformed. But anyway, uh, New Brunswick is an extremely segregated and divided city and it has a clear shortage of affordable housing. And I'm concerned that this development will worsen this divide like basically everybody else in this meeting has said. Uh, the juxtaposition of hundreds of homeless people sleeping out on the streets as there are luxury high rises going up around the city is ultimately a policy choice. It's not an unchangeable pact of life. A major increase in the stock of affordable housing is both achievable and necessary to fulfill the city's master plan goal, which is to expand the housing supply for different segments of the housing market. My concern is this development only expands the housing supply with luxury and market rate units and zero affordable units. I'm not against building more market rate units in general, but it's clear that the greatest need in New Brunswick right now is for affordable units. The fact that the cheapest unit is renting for around sixteen hundred dollars a month is absurd. Both the federal government and the state define housing as unaffordable if one pays over thirty percent of their monthly income for it. And by that metric, based on the median household income in New Brunswick of about forty-three thousand dollars, anything above uh, one thousand seventy-five dollars would be considered unaffordable without heavy subsidies. Depending on the census tract, uh, anywhere from forty-six to seventy-four percent of renters are paying more than thirty percent for their housing. So I don't know how anybody could say that New Brunswick is more affordable than the rest of the county. It indicates a tremendous unmet demand for low-cost housing. The waiting list, according to HUD, to get subsidized housing in the New Brunswick Housing Authority is thirty-one months. And is, there is also a lack of federal funding for programs like Section Eight and other programs to assist renters with getting a place to live. So in other words, I think that is a social responsibility of the developers in New Brunswick to do their part to increase the supply of affordable housing. I understand that developers are primarily concerned with making a profit, but there are countless mixed income developments both in New Brunswick and around the state and the country which prove that you can make a profit with a ten or twenty percent of units being affordable to low-income households. I don't think that that's an unreasonable standard. And if the, if Russo cannot meet that social responsibility, then the NPAHA has a responsibility to vote against that development. I'd also like to, if possible, get more clarity on what the pilot payment would be used for. Uh, I'm sorry if this was already covered in a previous meeting, but if it were to be used for rehabilitation of existing affordable units, for example, that's nowhere near as beneficial to dealing with the city's cost of living crisis compared to actually building new units. And if there are actual new units being planned, would they be in mixed income developments with decent transit access and economic opportunity? Or will they instead contribute further to the segregation of the city? I'm also concerned, one last point with the process, based mostly on what I've heard from other commentators, that there have already been multiple meetings, um, at multiple meetings, where this has been overwhelmingly opposed by those in attendance and voted down. Of the more than forty members of the public in this meeting tonight, um, i- if I had to guess, aside from uh, Jack, I'm sorry, I forget his uh, last name. But aside from that one person, I would have guessed that basically everybody in attendance as a member of the public is against this development. So I would encourage the board to again vote against this and find a new developer uh, who would actually meet the city's goal of increasing the stock of affordable housing. Uh, thank you and I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Uh, Chair, that's it. Are you ready? Oh, I'm sorry, one hand just, someone's hand just came up. Is it Brett, Brendan?
That's me.
Hi, Brendan, go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Brendan Kaplan. I've lived in New Brunswick almost twenty years. At this point, the years blend together and this point, the years blend together and I'm not really sure how long I've been here, but I've um, enjoyed most of my time in New Brunswick. I want to attend this meeting and speak in support of this project. And the reason that I would like to do that is because I think there is something going on behind the scenes. I think there are a lot of narratives coming out about what's going on behind the scenes. Allusions to corruption in the city government. The first couple of speakers managed to keep a polite tone and stuck to policy, which I thought was heartening and a welcome departure from the usual suspects. However, a lot of the other folks who came on, they said the quiet part out loud. They said, you guys are taking money for this. They said, you guys are evil. You're trying to get ahead. You're doing backroom deals with cigars, all sorts of uh, imagery. These images, I think, were designed to be thought interrupting cliches, thought interrupting statements. They were made to paint the picture. What's really going on is there are a few people who are seeking personal gain, who are whipping up a mob to come to this meeting. Who are whipping up a mob to come to this meeting. And just like Donald Trump say, it's all corrupt, it's rigged, and I alone can come in and fix it. I find that very, very, very disturbing. I'm reminded of William Butler Yeats. In his famous poem, Things Fall Apart, The Center Cannot Hold, Mere Anarchy Is Loosed Upon The World. The blood dimmed tide is loosed everywhere and the ceremony of innocence is drowned. The best last all conviction while the worst are full of passionate intensity. And you can hear this passionate intensity among the worst of us. Who seek to paint this picture, not with facts, but with illusions.
Boo, stop speaking, boo.
Can I please finish or are you going to be a mob and shout me down? Thank you so much, Oscar. Appreciate that. I appreciate that respect.
Other people, do not unmute yourself. Thank you. Go ahead. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Kaplan. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. You didn't do anything wrong. So uh, O- Oscar, I'm sure, has been told all sorts of horrible things about me behind the scenes. Um, let's stick to the facts. People say that we're not going to be able to fill these units if this development goes forward. You know what happens in that case? The rent goes down. If a developer has a unit that is unfilled and they're getting zero dollars. Would they prefer to get zero dollars or would they prefer to lower the rent until somebody can actually afford it? Let's talk about the crime. Let's talk about the notion that this is gentrification, that we're pushing people out. The last I checked, this is a dilapidated Sears parking lot. An artifact of the car culture that permeated this country and destroyed so many communities. I'm very much encouraged to see this parking lot converted to housing. Let's talk about the fact that people say they're so upset that there have been several meetings. This is government. This is public access. Anybody can propose projects. Anybody can come to meetings. In fact, many of the people here speaking in opposition to this project tonight are constant fixtures, lampries, if you will. At these public meetings, nobody tells them they're not allowed to be here. Nobody tells them that they have to go home or that they have to be quiet. And I'm disappointed that this meeting is being treated uh as if it's somehow evil. Because I think it speaks to a very, very, very concerning trend in American democracy.
Mr. Kaplan, you have one minute. Mr. Kaplan, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. That's fine. The blurring of facts and fiction. By people who seek to convert their failures into successes by seizing control of government. So after this meeting, all of you who have been summoned here are going to be told all sorts of horrible things about me and about who I am. Just like Donald Trump talks about Stormy Daniels and all of the other folks that he wants to destroy. Because they speak out against him. So I urge the members of this board to be brave and understand that. Twenty to forty people being directed to come here to manufacture an appearance. Does not represent the voice of the people, does not represent the will of the people. In the last mayoral election, the mayor won by the largest margin in several elections. And I think that tells us everything we need to know about what the people in this city want and need and think. I'm not going to stick around for the rest of this meeting. I'm going to go for a bike ride, but I expect to be back several times.
Oh, Mr. Kaplan, that's your time. I'm sorry if you.
Bye throughout the next several months to make my voice heard. And that's what being brave is, standing up in front of the mob.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, it's not to comment back at um what each other has said. At this time. We are going to move on. I'm sorry, my video is off. My apologies. My apologies. Uh, at this time, we're going to move on at the new business resolution. Um, and then from there on. Um, we'll will address a few questions that um need to be asked. We'll only be taking a few of the questions.
Okay, Chair, you want me to read the resolution?
Read the resolution, please. Thank you.
Okay, Resolution number twenty-four, acting as redevelopment agency is a resolution approving RTF NB Urban Renewal LLC. As redeveloper for property known as Block Seven, One, Zero, Lot Seven Point Zero Two. Seven Point Zero Three and Seven Point Zero Four and Block Seven Oh Seven Dot Zero One. Lots Three Five Point One Three on the New Brunswick tax map for construction of a residential and commercial project. Located in the Sears redevelopment plan area. You need a motion in a second to open? Commissioners?
Motion.
Yes.
A second?
I'm sorry, who moved? I didn't hear which commissioner moved.
Wallace, Donlan.
Wallace, okay, thank you, Commissioner Donlan. Uh, and who who seconded?
I did, Dale.
Hey, hi, hi, Doc. Thank you, Doc. Call well. Uh, Chair, you have uh John Hoffman here, special counsel.
Mr. Hoffman, go ahead.
John, you're on mute.
Mr. Hoffman?
Uh, hold on, let me see if I can unmute him real quick. Let's see, unmute. There you go, John. You should be good.
I would like to note uh that Dan Domenas, who is the director of planning and community and economic development. Sent a a letter to the all the commissioners, which dealt with many of these issues. And dealt with the history of this site and how they tried to develop the site. For years and have not been able to. And that this development is one that fits the redevelopment plan. The resolution before you is two things. One, to appoint. RTF NB Urban Renewal as the redeveloper and the second is to is to approve the redevelopment agreement. The project is a project which consists of five hundred and thirty rental units, one hundred and ninety for sale units. Twenty thousand square feet of retail, a single retail building, which is hopefully used as a grocery store. And a small retail building with a uh. A drive-through. The project will be constructed in phases. The development projected to cost two hundred and six million dollars. And the project is to start. Construction in November of two thousand twenty-three and be finished in December of two thousand twenty-seven. The developer has constructed many multiple mixed-use projects in New Jersey. In Union, Garwood, Woodbridge, Carney, Newark, now constructed in East Brunswick. The developers constructed over three thousand units in the past five years. In connection with with those units and other projects, he secured seven hundred and twenty-five million of construction financing over the past five years. There were some issues that were raised about water and sewer. Those issues are planning board issues and the developer will is required to go before the planning board. And I suggest anyone who has a water or sewer issue, that's the appropriate place for that to be discussed. The role of the redevelopment agency is is really twofold. One, to confirm that the plan. That was presented by the developer conforms with the redevelopment plan. And we have reviewed it and it has. Second is to determine whether. The developer has the experience and the financial capability to complete the project. And I've indicated a few information on that. The second part of the resolution is to approve a redevelopment agreement. And the redevelopment agreement is similar to the agreements which is in your 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 folder and similar to all the other. The redevelopment agreements that you've seen before. I should comment on one thing because many. Of the commentators indicated that this project was voted down. It was not voted down. The last vote was two in favor, one against, two abstained. We were asked to do legal research and our research is that the project was actually approved because. There was a quorum. They owed four people for a quorum and you need a majority of those voting and you had a majority. However, for reasons of of letting other members who went there participate. And to consider the comments of the people and also consider the memo. Of Mr. Dominguez, that's the primary reasons we're here tonight. If I can answer any questions, otherwise I'll turn it over to. Guess, guess Neil.
Here. Um, yeah, so you know, we we heard a lot of impassioned comments and I I I respect and I appreciate the impassioned comments, but we didn't hear any research. And so have you seen the article, John Hoffman, of February fourteen, twenty twenty, which actually says that high luxury units act?
Dale, you've you've frozen.
Actually can reduce the rents in the local urban community or. Dale, you're cutting in and out. If you turn your video off. Get there. If you turn your video off, I think the audio will continue better. Yeah, yeah, let me turn the video. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's better. Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can. That's why my video was off earlier. Can you hear me now? There was there's a New York Times article. I like to do research about about this on February fourteen, twenty twenty. The Economist have actually shown that. So um, so that's that's something, John. Have you seen that article? And I would cite if there are reporters here to look at that article, February fourteen, twenty twenty. Uh, have you seen that, John?
I have not seen that article, sorry.
Okay, good. All right. Well, that's my question.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chairman, I'm finished. I don't know whether you want uh Kate Coffee, the attorney for.
Yes, I wanted to know if you were done, Mr. Hoffman. So um, Ms. Coffee?
Of course, I'll answer questions.
Thank you.
Um, hello, Madam Chairman. I, as you know, the redeveloper has been before. Uh, the redevelopment agency twice before now and has spoken uh to its credentials and experience as a as a redeveloper. And its intention to adhere to the redevelopment plan. Um, and I I don't want to belabor uh those points before the board. We're happy to respond to any questions they may have and I. I know that there are others who um are slated to speak as well, so I I I won't. Repeat what you all have already heard unless unless you'd like me to.
Thank you, Ms. Coffee. At this point in, at this point in time, um, the commissioners, are there any um additional questions that you have from Ms. Coffee before? I um reach out to the public for those who might have any questions. And again, with the public, there'll be a limited amount of individuals with the questions, a limited amount.
Good evening, Ms. Coffee. This is Commissioner Wallace Dunlap Senior. And I went over the meetings, some of the things I would say that I can recall. And there is an obvious problem, and that's why we're here for the third time. And I'm looking at individuals such as yourself and Mr. Russo and Mr. Hoffman and um. Michael and the other gentleman, I think it's John, they had points that I would call good points. And they spoke what they thought to be accurate and good. And I look at that from the perspective of their sight. And I say, okay, if if I'm in a business and I'm projecting to make a project such as this. And it's what I see and perceive and think, I can understand that. Yet there's an obvious problem here because there's more individuals involved. And on different categories of different levels in life. And what I see here is. Everybody has a sight to see. There's nobody here is blind, naturally, so. Everybody can hear one another. There's no deaf individual. And we all can kind of like feel or be touched and feel. And I also noticed, you know, we all have our senses, the five senses, smell and the latter would be taste. We all seem to be healthy in that area. Or those areas. But I'm looking at the conflict. And the tension and the disagreement, that's nothing new. Yet for the first, second, now the third meeting. The obvious is lack of affordable housing. And then in light of other requests, problems, situations that came up. And resolved answers will not be coming from obviously your Mr. Russo. Because I see you still in that same line, uh, that same mindset. So I just like to say, have you altered, changed, considered, re anything of what the last two meetings were? Now that one, the third, Ms.
Mr. Wall, I I'll I'll try to respond um to your question. So the the redevelopment plan that the city adopted. Uh. Continues to provide for the residential component of the redevelopment project to include market rate uh development only. And if Russo were appointed to be redeveloper. Our duty would be to construct the redevelopment project in accordance with that redevelopment plan. And the city has not amended the redevelopment plan since we were here previously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wallace. Any other commissioners with um other questions for Ms. Coffee?
Uh, Chair, I see Commissioner Walde, did you unmute to ask a question or are you just unmuted?
No, just unmuted.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. At this point in time, again, we'll take a limited amount of um questions.
You want me to start with the uh the the first five questions, Chair?
Yes, we'll just focus on the first five questions. Thank you. And again, it's a um, it's um, a limited amount of questions. Thank you very much.
Sure. Uh, first question is from Elizabeth uh Sikoni. Elizabeth?
Mr. Connie?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just trying to get that going. Hi, uh, good evening. Um, this question is for Ms. Coffee. Um, we're under the impression that essentially. Uh, the developer wants to charge what the developer wants to charge because at the. Level you want to charge at, basically the profit margin is there to have this many units and if you charge this rate and higher, you'll make a profit. Why is it this board's responsibility to guarantee you a profit? Isn't that your own problem? Shouldn't your plan include affordable housing and thus be a better plan so that your plan can include a profit even with affordable housing?
So, Mr. Connie, the redevelopment agency's obligation is not to. Um, determine whether the redeveloper will make a profit or not. The redevelopment agency's obligation is to determine whether the redeveloper. Is qualified to construct the project that is prescribed by the redevelopment plan.
But you know, we're all asking for your project to be amended in a certain manner to allow for affordable housing, which. Is kind of the mission of this actual board. So um, what I'm trying to get at is. If you can't plan something with affordable housing that turns a profit. To my mind, that makes you a poor developer and not suitable for this project whatsoever. So I hope the board will consider that. One other thing, um.
I'm sorry, Ms. Con, we're we're trying to get to to five people, so.
To other individuals, Mr. Con. Thank you for your um for your question and again, thank you for your um comments.
The next person, Chair, was Mr. Albert Valari. Mr. Valari, you were next. Albert, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Albert. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I I I'd like to comment now on one thing that Mr. Kaplan said because we're not a MAGA bunch.
Mr. Valari, at this point in time, it's um we're asking questions to Ms. Coffee, Mr. Valari, at this point in time.
Okay, but I I I wanted to make that point because it's an important point, okay? My question is, why should this be put to a some kind of voter referendum to the city? Because we are going to be directly affected by this. In one way or another, we are all going to be affected. As we've been affected by all this gentrification that's been going on all over town and it it has its effects and we all talked about that. So I want to know, why should this be put to a vote for the people, the people who are being affected? Instead of this small panel that seems to have this life and death decision for the rest of the of of the city? Can you a- answer that question for me? Thank you.
Sure, sure. I, well, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Coffee. Thank you.
The the redevelopment process is set out by a statute that New Jersey Legislature adopted. And that statute provides that a redevelopment plan is to be adopted by an ordinance of your city council. And so tha- that's the process that's prescribed by law in New Jersey and the city council. Did ha- adopt an ordinance and that was done by public meeting. There was notice in the newspaper. Um, and folks were invited to come and share their thoughts on that. It was also reviewed by the planning board for consistency with your master plan and that was another public meeting. Where folks could come and share their input and ultimately the council members who. Uh, any New Brunswick resident would be entitled to vote for are the ones who are tasked with taking in the input from the folks who live in the community. Um, considering uh the advice of their professionals and determining whether a redevelopment plan is appropriate or not for a given parcel. And that's the process. And that's the process that was followed here. The New Jersey Legislature statute that governs redevelopment does not provide for a referendum process.
Thank you, Ms. Coffee.
I would like to say, though, whatever it takes, I think we should develop some kind of a system here that that we have more input than just showing up and, you know, you know, pouring our hearts out to probably a deaf panel here that's not going to care what what our feelings are. And I know these votes, there's so much pressure here. I don't expect the vote to go this the way we want it to go, but that's why I think we need to have more input in this.
Okay, thank you. Chair, the next person was Ms. Fernandez?
This is the third. This is the third individual.
Correct, this is the third.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Fernandez.
I'll yield my time to Perez Bombelin if they still want to ask a question.
Sorry?
I said I'll yield my my time to Perez Bombelin if they'd like to ask a question.
I have I have Mr. Bombelin. Well, there's only, okay.
Are they? I mean, are they next?
Actually, that's after the next person. That's after the next person, so.
So they'll get a chance to speak? Okay, I just want to make sure they get a chance. Okay. So, yes, my question is, what kind of viability studies to Ms. Coffee, what kind of viability studies has the developer done in terms of the infrastructure for this development project? And given that Mr. Caldwell mentioned research and cited one New York Times article as research in favor of this kind of development, what kind of research is there? Do we have? What kind of data do we have on the occupancy rates of the existing high rises all over downtown New Brunswick and what we can expect in this development project?
So, Ms. Fernandez, the the proposed redeveloper has engaged an engineering team, which has studied at length the existing infrastructure and recommended infrastructure improvements. However, again, all of that is sort of beyond the scope of whether they're a qualified redeveloper and more, as Mr. Hoffman stated, a planning board issue.
Okay, then I would just like to point out also, someone mentioned that this is being about haves and have-nots, have and have-nots. Most of the people represented here are highly educated people, people who graduated from Rutgers, from elsewhere, who have law degrees, PhDs such as myself and others. So I really would appreciate if the folks who are speaking in favor of this development project speak to us with some, you know, respect and dignity as, you know, the intelligent people that we are.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
Next one is 732-993-9697. 9697, no name.
Good evening, Charlie Cradaville. Once again, I was shocked by a statement I heard. I need to ask Mr. Hoffman if he's familiar with the bylaws of the authority, specifically Article 3, Section 4, which states the authority upon the affirmative vote of the majority, but not less than four of the commissioners present, may take action. How does he square that with his statement that this project was approved with two affirmative votes at the last meeting? And why then did Mr. Clark put in writing that the motion failed? And is it Mr. Hoffman's position tonight that the board can approve this resolution with less than four affirmative votes?
No, we're moving forward with, sorry, John, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, Chair, that I I did provide a response to Mr. Cradaville that night. That 212 was not an affirmative passing of the resolution.
Yes, and that's correct.
Your attorney didn't get the memo, and I think it's concerning that that he's wrong. I would just appeal to the board. Please vote no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Ms.
Sure, the next one is Perez.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for letting me ask these questions. I I understand you're asking that questions be directed to Ms. Coffee. And I will direct them to her, but they were to be directed to the commissioners. I want to know if the commissioners reviewed the financial agreement between the city and the developer before tonight's meeting, if they were provided with a copy, and whether they reviewed it. I would also like Ms. Coffee to lay out the progression for the increase in the pilot, which I understand is supposed to start at 1.5 million, which on 500 on 500 units is maybe a 50% discount on property tax, rough, very roughly speaking. So if you could, if you could respond to those two questions, I would appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Coffee?
Sure. So Ms. Bombelin, I don't know whether the Housing Authority commissioners, acting as the redevelopment agency, have reviewed the financial agreement. It is a publicly available document, so that would be available if they were looking for it. I couldn't tell you whether they have or not.
Ms. Coffee, Ms. Coffee, I just want you to know. Ms. Coffee, I just want you to know that my efforts since May 18th to get a copy of that document have been rebuffed at every turn, including this morning from Mr. Hoffman. All right, who told me? I asked him for the document and he said the Housing Authority doesn't have to approve that document. I never said they have to approve it, but given the two distinct questions that you laid out to this board tonight and last time, one about the financial viability, it would be incumbent upon these commissioners to have that document and to review it. I wanted to review it to ask better questions. I wanted to review it to be more informed. But for some reason, it's being withheld. And I find that really speaking to, and really, I mean, people are upset because, and they say things in here that they're very angry, you know, and they're accusing people of being duplicitous. And when you treat the public that way, that's the impression they come away with. I don't know that Russo is duplicitous. I really, I really doubt it, you know? I don't think they know that all this baggage that New Brunswick carries. They come in here, they want to do a project, and they're doing what's in the plan. I hear it. I hear it. But.
Ms. Bombelin.
Come on, show the plan. And can you please describe the pilot, how the pilot graduates?
Ms. Coffee, thank you, Ms. Bombelin, without any less.
Sure. I can I can describe the pilot, and I'll pull it up in a minute, but just to remind everybody, the bylaw, the pilot is something that is approved by the council and has been approved by the council. And also by law, the purpose of the pilot is to facilitate a redevelopment project that cannot be developed through the ordinary instrumentality of capital because of the challenges associated with the redevelopment of the property. And that's why a pilot is typically adopted. I will pull up the agreement in a minute. Madam Chairman, woman, if you would like me to review those terms, although, again, it's been adopted by the city council already. But if you'd like me to go through it, I'm happy to.
Chair, you're on mute.
My apologies. Yes, Ms. Coffee.
Okay, give me one second, and I will see if I can get it.
Chair, would you like to go to the next commenter or you would want to stay here? This way we can get somebody else in?
Well, it's not a comment. Once again, it's a question that you have for Ms. Coffee.
Next questioner.
Yes. She is in the process of pulling this up as of right now. So, Ms. Coffee, will you take a question while you're doing this?
I can try. It's not not always good to be, yeah, that sitting and listening at the same time. But I can certainly try if you would like me to.
Let's give a few minutes to let her pull this up, so then she can review. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm almost there. Hang on.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the there are a lot of components that go into a pilot in terms of how the formula goes into calculating what's being paid. But presuming that's your question, Ms. Bombelin, the answer is that the annual service charge trying to, there are two different phasings of what the annual service charge will be. An annual service charge is what's being paid by a redeveloper instead of ad valorem taxes. So the first sequencing is in years one through 10 of the pilot. The redeveloper is to pay 10% of the annual gross revenue that's derived from the project. In years 11 through 15, that steps up to 11%. 16 through 20 goes up to 12%, 21 through 25, it's 13%, and 26 through 30, it's 15%. In addition to those strata, there are also requirements that, starting in year in for years 16 through 21, the redevelopers required to pay the higher of the annual service charge that I just read or 20% of the real estate taxes that would otherwise be due on the value of the land and the improvements, which is the statutory provision. Then in years 22 through 27, it's the greater of the annual service charge or 40% of the taxes that would otherwise be due. In years 28 through 29, it's the greater of the annual service charge or 60%. And then in year 30, it's the greater of the annual service charge or 80% of the taxes that would otherwise be due. And after year 30, the pilot terminates. That that's hopefully responsive to your question, but that's the the general structure of the pilot.
Well, will the pilot be passed on to the to the town, the townhouse owners? I understand those properties will be for sale. So will the will the pilot be passed on to them?
Ms. Bombelin, Ms. Coffee, before you continue on, Ms. Bombelin, we have Dan Dominguez from the city who can answer a few of those questions, Ms. Bombelin. Mr. Dominguez?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Can you can, if she may, can the question be restated? I apologize.
The question is, will the owners of the townhouse in phase two, presumably, the townhouses get bought and they get sold to individuals?
Yes.
Will the individuals who buy the townhouse get the same pilot that was just described to us by Ms. Coffee?
So they will still get a tax exemption. There is a section of the agreement that handles that. It's calculated differently for owner occupied properties or for sale properties. It's handled a little differently. But there is a basis in the pilot for how that will occur. It will be based on a factor and dependent on what the property sell for. So whatever rates are reflected in the actual tax exemption contract as of right now are only reflecting the the non-townhome properties. So it's that plus whatever is generated from the townhomes. And that, again, will be dependent on what the units sell for. But there is a component which, off the top of my head, I do not recall, Ms. Coffee has it in front of her. She may recall which section handles the the component that handles the determination for the townhome tax exemption. But yes, the townhomes will be have a tax benefit of some sort.
And it'll run 30 years, 30 years from purchase or 30 years from now?
Ms. Bombelin, that'll be your last question because we have another individual asking a question. And then any other further questions you might have for Mr. Dominguez, you can contact him.
Now, I'll partly defer to Ms. Coffee because we haven't had too many of those and certainly none during my time. But my understanding is that it runs 30 years from the sale of the unit. But I reserve the right to be wrong on that. But, yeah.
And because you defer to me, Mr. Dominguez, you're correct, the term of the pilot is 30 years.
From date of sale of the townhouse.
I. Okay, we need to move on to another individual who have questions. They've been waiting patiently, Ms. Bombelin. So, Mr. Clark, John, who is the next individual?
The next, the last one, the chair, would be Jas Kamar. Jas Kamar?
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes, you can, Jas Kamar. Go ahead.
So for Ms. Coffee, my question is, the last meeting we had, Mr. Russo said himself that it would be economically infeasible to build a certain percentage of affordable rentals or properties. So what were his estimates in terms of what financial loss he would he would incur if he were to make, let's say, 10 or 15% affordable rentals? Does he have the numbers or did he just say that, you know, whole cloth, ad whole cloth?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear the the end of your statement, but the the short answer is I don't have those figures.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, is there any additional information from as far as representing the city that you would like to add?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Dominguez.
No, ma'am. I have nothing to add at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Okay. Okay. All right. So we close on public comments and questions. And now, John, this will go to vote.
Are you ready for the vote, Chair?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Caldwell. On the vote, on the motion.
I approve.
Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani. Commissioner Giorgiani? I think we lost him, maybe, Chair? Shall I circle back, Chair?
Yes, is he still there?
I see the number is still there, but Commissioner Sepeda?
Yes.
Commissioner Donglap?
No.
Commissioner, did Commissioner Wright come on? I don't believe I saw. I don't believe I saw him on. I did not. Madam Chair?
Yes.
And Commissioner Giorgiani, are you on? Commissioner Giorgiani? I don't have a call, Chair, so we'll have to.
So it fails.
Okay, Chair?
Motion fails if your people aren't there when you call the vote.
So, I'm sorry, could you?
Giorgiani needs to be present. He was there initially, John.
Right, he would not be recorded. Yeah, he would not be recorded as he, oh, hold on one second. I'm sorry. Commissioner Giorgiani?
Yes, it's me. I couldn't get off mute. That's why I kept trying to call back, so I called you back. My thing is, yes, if that helps.
Yep, you are on. You're on speaker, Commissioner, so I'm sorry. What was the vote?
Yes.
Okay, Chair, what I.
What a disgrace.
One, two, could you, please don't interrupt the meeting, ma'am. I'm sorry. One, two, three. Okay, Chair, those were all the actions.
Okay.
You ready for an adjournment, Chair?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Disgusting.
Is there a motion?
Vote them out. You are disgusting.
Get your promotions.
Vote them out. Vote them out.
Good wonder.
I'm gonna take that as a second.
You're the MAGA troop.
Commissioner Walde, was that a second?
I wish that the commissioners would explain their votes, please.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
This is on the adjournment. Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Sepeda?
Yes.
Commissioner Donglap on the adjournment?
Yes, adjourned.
And Chair?
Yes.
I never knew you in person.
Have a good night.